Glad to be here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody to our November Common Council Regular Session. I cannot believe it's November already. Well, it's gone by quickly. Michaela, what did you hear?
Yes. Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Hammer.
Here.
Counselor Aspel.
Here.
Counselor Langton.
Here.
Counselor Mattson.
Here.
Counselor Nicholson. Counselor Gary.
Here.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience other than Phil that has a special request or street closure request that is not already on the agenda? Okay, Phil, can you go ahead and take the podium and tell us about your street closure request? I think everybody has a copy up there.
So, the city has approved money. This is reference to the freight people on the south side of town. And you guys have already approved money for a portion of the cost of the relocation of the building. And so, what we're asking for is approval to close the road. You'll see on the form, there's a tentative date of 21 January. This is the latest date we've set up with the mover based on the moving target with the closure of Washington Street because we're not going to close the highway until you've got this open. But what we're proposing is, since things have changed so many times before, is that the council approve closure of the road for move, understanding right now it's 21 January, but authorizing the mayor to make a change in the date if that's required or not. And I don't want to hold anybody up, but if you want to know more information about the depot, I could probably bore you to tears about it. But that's the specific reason why I'm here.
200 yards east, is that limited street? It's more than that, isn't it?
It's not going to get you to a street. I don't know the exact mark on the road, but it's not going to...I don't think...I mean, think two football fields from that corner, that's not going to...
It's not far enough, so it's something...
Well, no, it'll be...the mover's gonna...the plan is to take down a portion of the fence. There's two trees that will need to be relocated. The idea would be to move those out and put them back in once they...but he's going to take it right across the ditch.
Well, my only concern is if somebody turns off of 231 West, and they can go 100 yards, and all of a sudden they're deadheaded.
Okay. So, I guess what I would suggest is, that's the space we need to move the building. If you want to close it at the intersection, that makes perfect sense from the very point of view you're making. But what we need is the space that's put down here. So, if you want to close it...
What's everybody else think?
Is it just one side of the road?
Uh, you're gonna need...you're gonna...yeah. From the east point to the west point, you're gonna need the road, at least in that space closed. And they really think it would take about three hours, but you'll see we've asked for work because...yeah.
Chris, what do you think? To move the depot across the road?
Mine is any commercial vehicles that might be...as long as I got a head talk about it, I don't...
Should we close it up at the intersection, or should we close it down further?
Probably at the intersection.
Yeah, there's no way out once they get in.
Yeah, there's really no way out.
And it's very logical, but again, we're moving down the space that the contractor said they needed to offer.
Put barricades, signs, etc. on the...
Yeah, depending on how busy they are that day, they might be looking down.
It's going to create a crowd.
That's all right, they're used to road closures. Yeah.
Well, close is one thing, you know, going down and all of a sudden jamming on your brakes.
Yeah, I agree.
With late evening. And to help get out.
So, we can...because Washington Street will be open, and Bloomington and Jackson and all will be open stuff. So, we want to change this to the intersections, both intersections, the bigger red bull and yellow and white. So, okay, somebody like to make a motion for that?
Some move.
Okay, we have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any names or sayings or sentences?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We will do that, and you can take a motion down to this number on. Okay, the next item, any other folks that aren't on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Special request, we have five cameras signed, Friday night lights, so you care?
Hey, we're looking for a noise ordinance for tomorrow night. It's banned anger out, Simone on weekend, so we're trying to have a big party where we don't want to have a band and disturb anyone, but we're looking for a noise ordinance for that party.
Okay, from 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that...
We have security in the party, we'll have security as well.
Okay. Have you notified the neighbors that you're having...
And then we went to DePaul Police as well. And that's...
I think usually when we have events like that, if it gets too many complaints, and our guys show up in late, just we'll ask you to turn it down.
And then we have, if there's a...I think we have on there that we have a complaint from, it's DePaul, Paul City, that they get a complaint from our house, they know it's still, it's not a noise ordinance for, we'll turn it down in that case.
Okay. Okay, I will entertain a motion for this request.
I shall do.
Okay, we got a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. You probably need me to check mark this for you to go now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a safe weekend.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is...
I can stay.
I don't know. Okay, Wally Fest.
That's pretty good. Hello. Who did this last year? This is a little different this year. We went to Monon Bell, we're asking to shut down just the beginning of our Main Street wrecked building. We will have music, 7 to 9, and then 9 to 11. One of the kids actually upholstered this couple of play, a later crowd. We are doing food outside, we will have beer parks outside as well. We are looking to, we have apple pie outside, something like that, pizza, butter slice, chili cornbread, more of a festival for the Monon Bell. We have a projector outside, we're tomorrow do all the Monon Bell games. And then Saturday we'll have the game, plus we'll do three runs of it as well. So, that's kind of the idea of what we're doing, working both Friday and Saturday during the day. I did a new one for my sport as well, obviously we're done by 11:00, and that's kind of the idea of the Monon Bell, but just to cover everything as well.
And then, any approval would have to be contingent upon you entering into the agreement like we did last year?
Yep.
And then you providing, agreeing to indemnify us, et cetera, et cetera, and providing the insurance.
I have an elevator there.
Oh, excellent. Perfect.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for, I guess, both the street closure and the noise ordinance for Wally Fest. Second, Catherine?
Second.
Second, next? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or saying? Okay. Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, the next item is Winter Lights Festival kickoff and parade. Jason Keeney.
Good evening, counselors.
Good evening.
All right, so my request is kind of on behalf of Civic League as well, and then I'll share the park portion of it too, so you don't have to see me again. Civic League is hosting the, or the park and Civic League is the Winter Lights Festival that we get every year at the park. But we're asking for permission on November 30th to have a parade through the city of Greencastle. I put the streets from Washington to Arlington to Seminary, Locust to Anderson, Anderson over to Wood, and then on to Tennessee, and then we'll come into the park there on the Tennessee Street entrance and go around the ball down in that direction. The park board has approved the use of the park inside the park parade. So, now I'm just asking for street closures. We did talk to the police department and the fire department and public works. It's basically rolling closure, it's not actual street closure for MBS. We will begin lining up at 4:00 at DHS. The plane right now is going to leave by 4:30, and it should take no more than 45 minutes to do the entire route. And we know the route works because we've done it for the parade. So, I don't imagine a big event, but we do think there will be some people there. So, that's what we're asking for approval for. I put it till 5:30 at the latest, but it should probably be held more than 4:45. Yes.
If any local groups or folks want to participate, how would they reach out and get involved?
So, they just need to reach out to Ashley or the Civic League, but they reach out to Ashley at the park, 765-653-3395, and she can sign them up for that.
But you want to make it bigger, right?
Yes, we want to make it as big as possible, so that maybe we might have to close rabbits next year. They're kind of excited. But yeah, hopefully next year we'll all speed back to more of a normal route. But anybody who's welcome to participate, any organization, business. It's, I imagine, it'll probably give you no more than 30 minutes, but the bigger we can go, Santa Claus will come on the fire truck again this year. And then I will tell you that, starting after the parade arrives at the park, we have the Winter Lights Festival. The Winter Lights Festival will be the kickoff to the winter holiday season at the park. All the lights will be lit that night. The fire department will be there for cookies and Santa. We have some gaming, Indiana game, or... Mission will be there. Games, we have some music, that'll be live music, some carolers that will be moving around. There's also going to be a winter market set up there. I believe actually at 16 vendors so far, so if anybody would like to participate as a vendor as well, we are still looking for vendor spots there. But that will start then, and then the lights should be turned on near the very end of the ceremony there, we'll have a lighting ceremony. She's still trying to figure out how exactly, who's going to flip the switch. If we need the mayor to flip the switch, or somebody, we'll figure that out here. But it should be a good evening at the park, and it's small business Saturday, so we talked to all the neighbors in the neighborhood, all the businesses, and we have a pretty decent arrangement with all the neighbors. So, we won't be blocking any parking lots or anything for the businesses around us. If they have any questions about that.
If vendors want to be a part of the winter festival, is there a cost, or do they just reach out to the...
They need to reach out to Ashley. If you are selling food, there is a health department regulation that you have to...
But if they want to sell things or...
Yeah, if you want to sell crafts and things, reach out to Ashley. Talk to her about registration and everything, she has everything, and you just call the office and she can help you there. But we're looking for more participants there.
And the lights are lit until?
Um, I believe January 1st.
At least.
Yeah, during the holidays.
I can't remember exactly.
It depends on all of these other things. Bye. I believe it's till 8:00 at night. That's not our earliest. So, we are asking for this, rolling street closure from you guys.
I would look for allowing somebody, yes, rolling street closure has all the streets as listed.
Now, Jen, second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to handle the last street closure request. Gail was going to come, but she is doing an event at a museum right now, so I told her I would just cover it. So, Main Street Greencastle is going to have a Frost Friday instead of the first Friday downtown. We're going to go ahead and ask for the streets to be closed. If it's a nice evening, and we have a big crowd, we might want to have the ability to shut the streets. More than likely, we will not shut them, but we just want to have that option. So, we're asking for a street closure. It's the same street closures as first Fridays, but it's not going to be for as long. So, the event starts at 5:30, goes to 8:00. It really is highlighting the downtown merchants and restaurants downtown. I think there's going to be some, hopefully some events in the M2 building, maybe some local vendors in there, some different things. So, a nice event downtown Greencastle on a frosty Friday, so...
No outdoor music or anything?
Um, maybe carolers, but I don't think there's anything specific.
No stage?
I would say probably, some of the restaurants will probably have music inside.
All right, okay.
But it, we're asking for the street closure from 4:30 to 8:30, like I said, the normal closures. So, it might be the case we just shut down Indiana Street or not, you know, Washington or whatever, or...
Right.
Or some street to Washington or the next street. Anyways, I would entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to have Frost Friday in Greencastle, Frost, December, I love that name, December 6th.
Yeah.
December 6th.
So, I have a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
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 And anybody opposed? Okay.
Hope it goes well, have it next year.
Yep, start a new kind of Christmas holiday kickoff town, so we really, and I think you're going to see some folks have specials and all kinds of other things going on, so you'll probably see more about that coming up. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our department reports. I think all of you received those in the packet. Is this the first time they have had a little different format?
Yeah. Nice.
Yep, a little different format. We're kind of working our way through the whole thing here. Does anybody have any questions for the department heads, or do the department's heads have anything they want to share?
She Frank will come up for a minute.
No, I don't want to.
Just want me to talk about the smoke detector blitz?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, November 2nd, we get our smoke detector blitz in the fourth ward. We have eight firefighters, Counselor Geary, and we had one DePaul student that met with us, and we had 50 smoke detectors that were donated by Black Lumber, and we had 50 that were purchased by our local union. And we spent four hours canvassing the fourth ward and giving out smoke detectors and installing smoke detectors, and happy to say that we were able to get 80 smoke detectors out into homes in that area. So, it was a lot of walking, but I think it's well worth the cause if we're able to get one person or one family out of their house in the event that they're defi...so... Anything else?
No, that's great. And if anyone across the city wants a smoke detector, can they reach out to you?
Sure, they can. My email is on the city website now, which looks very nice, and we're on our Facebook page, they can email us, and we'd be happy to come out, check batteries, install smoke detectors, whatever it is we need to do to get these into people's houses.
Awesome. It was a really good time.
Yeah, it was fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any?
I just wanted to point out that the Department of Public Works, in addition to dealing with all the trees and limbs that were damaged by the hurricane, or Matt Reynolds of the hurricane, but they also did dirt work seven times over the... Also painted two days for the police department.
Well, I also tell you that they have also been helping out the utility department. We had, I think, nine or 10 leaks the last month, and we are now doing our own work here in the city, and we'll talk about it a little bit further when we get on into the thing. But Andrew and his team have been helping out, some of the guys at the utility, and they have been fixing all of our leaks. We've had an abundance of leaks, but kind of happens when we have weather change and pressure change on the system and things like that. So, yeah, we're excited about that, and so they've been helping them out, and been sharing equipment and just working really well together, so...
That's great to see.
Saves us a lot of money.
Hey, anybody else? No. I guess you guys can go home and enjoy the rest of your evening, and thanks for everything you do. Okay. I've got a couple of things to talk about. The first one is my favorite subject of INDOT. The thing, I guess what I'm going to say about that is, they gave me an earlier date that we're going to be open here in November, but that is not going to happen, so they're saying December.
December what?
Well...
Sometime in December?
Sometime in December. I...
What you hear?
2024. I will say they have been out here working a lot. We should start seeing asphalt out here very soon. They had to reroute their new water line a little bit to get the storm sweaters in down at the intersection, but I think all the storm sweaters are in, they're putting all the ground in, which is a lot, and we're going to start the paving. So, I expect sometime the first, second, third week of December that they will be out, and everybody will be able to drive on the new...it's not the final pavement code, so don't be calling and telling me the code, the pavement's terrible, it shouldn't be the final code. They'll do that when they can come through and do the whole Washington, Jackson, the whole thing. But that might change with them. But probably not all the sidewalks will be in yet, but they're going to work on those throughout. I will also tell you that we're probably going to experience downtown some sidewalks that aren't super even. There's some issues with the sidewalks downtown, but INDOT knows of my dissatisfaction of the work that they're putting our sidewalks back into, so we're trying to work through some of that with them, but I don't know how non-trip hazard they're going to be, so I just want people to know that we are trying to work something with them to make it better. The next big thing that's going to go on here does relate to also Washington Street, but on the other side of town. We did receive a community crossing grant of 1.5 million dollars on that. We will need to have that out to bid here in January, and that construction is going to start very quickly in the spring, hopefully April. Okay, it's going to be a quick start, but it is not going to be a quick project because it's going to entail, or it's going to cover the whole Washington from down at the stoplight all the way down to Percy Julian. Once we have our plans finalized and kind of, we're kind of, we're working with the school right now and some of the changes we're making, so we've met with Judge Givney. But we will have, everybody that that is in the neighborhoods there, we will have a community event where you'll come in, we'll explain to you the changes, where the closures will be, how they're going to happen. Of course, you all will have access to your homes, so that will be a requirement that if you live in the neighborhood, you have to be able to get to your homes. Now, at school, you may not, if you're coming to school, we don't, we have to give them access to certain spots, but you know, you're pretty much going to be on Percy Julian coming up around. So, we're working through the school with some of that. But we're excited about that. And then the final thing that I want to talk about or share or show you, if Michaela can get it on, is we released our new website. Are you getting started here? She's got it? Okay. But this is our new website that we issued on, or released on Wednesday. Kind of one of the things that's different than this is, we have a couple of platforms here in the city. They have a platform we use with Park, we have permitting and complaint software, we have Civic Clerk, which runs all of this. This group, this all communicates with us, so it's all the same company we're all communicating with, so... I'll let you draw it. Yeah, so, okay, so, anyways. Okay, so, one of the main thing I want to talk, point out, that's probably the newest addition, is the notify me. And so, when you go in and click on... You go into the... I really lost the cursor. The notify me portion, you'll go into it and hit our button there.
Yeah, it's really delayed, that's why it's...we get to know, that's the main one.
So, you hit the notify me, and all of our residents will be able to put in either their email address, or a text, or their phone number. And every time we update items in this section, so we have one, just a message from Greencastle, water, we have a section there where you can see utility updates, we have water leaks, service interruptions. Anytime we go into that section and add something to that, then you will get a notification that we have made an addition to our website. It's not going to tell you what it says, but it will tell you to go to the website and see what the new thing. We will have construction in Greencastle, and then we'll have where people who've got bits going out, they can check here. If we make any changes to our calendar, which I'll hopefully be able to show you that, we have an events calendar, so anytime we make additions to that, and then down underneath that, we have, I think, news flashes, and we have that. So, yeah, news flash. So, anytime we make, update any of those sections, which is what we're going to update along with our Facebook page, you can get a text to go to the website to see what's going on in Greencastle. So, it's a way that you can keep up with them. Aubrey, my assistant, is the person that's doing all of this. So, you know, it's just another tool for you to get communication, what's going on in the, going on in the city. You can pick one of them, or you can pick them all, so you know, it's just a way. And then, I believe there's another section that you can also, part of that, I think of that part, you can also get information on the agendas and mandates for those that are yours.
That's the Civic Clerk.
But they can get the same information, yeah, so you can sign up for that through the website too. So, that's one, and then, of course, we have our government and our departments. The community has different links to different things in the community. We have a section there called our furry friends in Greencastle, so it lists all the places in town that are pet friendly, different restaurants that have pets. If you want your pet to come out on the website, send us a picture of your pets that you have at home, or whatever, we'll be glad to put them out there. Right now, there's a really cute one out there on the website.
Wally.
So, I have Greencastle's furry friends. We also have a section on going green and gold together, which will keep you high-waived with the things that are going on with the things at the college. So, we, this is something that we do here at Greencastle, we do all of our own updates. And so, we're going to try, we're going to make this a living, changing, documented website here at the city that is very useful, gives out information. The other thing is, if you hit the park and recreation link, you go right to the park's website, and then there you can sign up for, there's a whole website page there, you can sign up for swim lessons, and our events, you know, swimming and all kinds of things, that they do, programs they do in the park, you can see their calendar of events and all that. When you're on the homepage, you, if you scroll on down, if we get us back to the homepage, and just scroll down to the bottom. So, right here, there's a section in the middle that will give us updates before that, or just different events that are going on in Greencastle. And then here is our calendar, where you see City of Greencastle meetings, that's all of our meetings, and then the next calendar, next you click on that, and that gives you a lot of city events that are going on. And it's not just city events, but... And it's not just city events, but community events that get turned into us. We're kind of putting them all out there, so. Um, I encourage everybody to kind of get up there and scroll around and, um. You can, uh, go in the section for public meetings and see what that is, and you can still get to all of our agendas and minutes and ordinance and resolutions. Those are all scanned in there. Um, and then as we update. All of our city code and things like that, that will all be up there, so it's, it's just gonna be a real comprehensive. And you can get information, up-to-date information, and so we're really excited about that. And then you can see community events, you just click on that one and it's that, but here you see the meetings, all of our meetings in our circle there, Commissioner Stain will be.
So Linda works, it says that, like, tonight, Council of the Meeting, it doesn't say what time it was, if you click on it.
Yeah, well, uh, she's moving the mouse over. It's, there's a real delay on the screen over here, so.
Wonder if someone wanted to go look at the, the last zoning board meeting? How would, could they get to it from here, a recording of it?
Yeah, so there's gonna be, when you, um. There is a YouTube connection that you can go into and allocate the meetings. They want to get that all up and going.
If you drop them like that, City of Green Castle, they don't have the other departments as well?
It'll give you all of them, um, City of Green Castle's. Yeah, like, like those are the meetings that we have this week, for this. Yeah, I mean, she just kind of went forward from the time we launched it forward. It does, I can tell you when you click on it. When you click on it, it does give you the time and where it is and everything.
It looks great.
Has it just been up since yesterday?
Uh, it started Wednesday at ten o'clock. So, it's a sip, yeah, and Aubrey's doing all the updating, so. Yeah, so you can go in, see all your, um, information. If you wanna add it, if you need the. Information you wanna be added to, then talk to Aubrey and she can. Get that, so, anyway, of course, but, but yeah. Get in it, play around in it, see what's there. There's a lot of information in it, so. We will here in a couple of days, you'll see a, a, a page for the fire department and the police department too, so. They'll be added.
There we go.
That's all I have for it. Well, she probably got it, she got it tomorrow. Back here, thank you, Mr. Council for programming. Your lovely faces. Uh, I don't have much this month. We did receive our seventeen eighty-two notice yesterday, um, for our budget, so. That is really quicker than we'd normally received it. So we're excited about that, that's good news. Okay, which council wants to start first? Daryl or Miss?
Go for it, Daryl.
Okay, Daryl.
Um, I pass around everybody a year in the report from the West Central Solid Waste District. You can, uh, look at Putnam County's, Park County's on there also, since they're a partner in, in this endeavor. Quite a bit of stuff that's gone through the various. Programs have had during the course, course of the year. You look at two thousand twenty-four, there's. Still a lot, still a lot of stuff out there that people are bringing to the solid waste. Days that we have and, and the big equipment is not on there. That's city oriented. So, the last one we had is not on there because that's under, under the auspices of the solid waste.
But this is not included, heavy trash.
No, this does not.
This just will go through the, no.
And trust me, we have a lot of stuff coming through the city.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you, Daryl. Sit.
Mark?
Um, just wanted to, uh, like, notice in the paper that one of our former council members, Adam Cole, was honored by. The placement of the law, the law, I'm paying, not talking about. That's plenty for the nerve, I'm paying. So I'm sure we recognize that. Longtime city council member.
By chance, did he come to town?
Yeah.
He did not?
Did not.
I believe they had a.
Zoomed in.
Yeah, they zoomed him in, they had some swimmers with him in Ohio.
Good.
That's nice.
I just wanna publicly, publicly thank Paul Mehan for all the hard work and the designing and all of her artistic talents. On the website, she did an amazing job. Um, Jason, I wonder, thank you for making the, um, the mailbox for Santa's. Letters that are starting that, and I'm gonna talk about that tomorrow.
Tomorrow. He's been asked to about Santa's lot of problems.
Yeah, good job on that, Jason. If you didn't see it, it's in the back. We built that, and so it's amazing. Uh, and also, thank you again to our police officers in town. You guys are always going above and beyond call of duty. Um, staying up with your trainings. I saw on the, this report, your officers have been doing lots of training. Um, to keep up with best practice, um, with police work, so thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Well done.
Thanks. Uh, quick update on our Community Connect event that was two weeks ago. They had, uh, four hundred and thirty-six individuals that came through Saturday morning. Two hundred and eighty-seven kids, gave out more than a hundred coats, and it's just a great event. It keeps getting bigger every year. Uh, many volunteers here from City Hall, Melanie volunteered, Kathy helped out, Linda, Michaela, myself, Tina was there. Just a real good, uh, successful day.
It's, um, it was nice.
I'm glad you mentioned sidewalks downtown, because Lester Wilson got ahold of me one day. And said, come down here and show me, I wanna show you something. At the corner, of course, of Indiana and Washington Starbucks. You've got basically, talking about deadhead on, on Veterans Highway, you've got a deadhead on the sidewalk. And there's not much room, if you're in a wheelchair or pushing a scroller, to try to maneuver, and I mean, it just like. If you're not paying attention, you're gonna eat the pavement.
I, uh, had a, an indot representative that was, I was showing him all of that, and he took pictures and. And I've gone up the food chain and indot to talk to them about this and. Telling them we've got to have some sort of resolution, so we'll see.
Yeah, that's, that's just dangerous.
I don't.
I'm an experienced jackhammer operator, so if it comes to that, you know what to do.
Well, I'm afraid that we're gonna get stocked with how to repair them.
It's, we're required to, you know, ADA, everything.
Well, they are.
And they can do this to us.
Yeah, they're required to also on their, on their. Well, they just have to have one path of ADA. I don't know, but somebody made the comment last night at our conference of, on planning meeting, but. And I don't remember how they phrased it, but basically, they can make it ADA, but it doesn't have to sometimes make sense.
Well, it doesn't.
It doesn't.
You know, I, I, I'm not as old as I used to be, you know, I might be walking down there whistling or something, or, you know. And, and I do, I'm a very, actually proficient. In like three different ways.
Well, I will tell you, we've already had somebody fall.
Oh, I, I, it's, it's just an accident waiting to happen. If I hadn't already, so.
It's, it's, yeah.
Yeah. And then, uh, the last thing I would say is Wabash always fights. They're gonna need to this weekend.
And apparently, all you learn at Wabash is how to use a jackhammer. Um, so a, a few things, uh, a few things going on. Uh, on top of spending the Saturday with the, the fire department, getting out smoke detectors. I was lucky enough to spend another day with them, riding out, uh, on the calls and, um. To be honest, it's been, it's a blur. I can't even remember all the calls we went on, but one of them was a, uh, a fire. Um, it was actually in Realsville, but we were going to support them. We got there right as the fire was put out. Uh, but it was interesting driving down Manhattan in a fire truck going full speed. Uh, but they were great, they were great drivers, and it was, it was a really good day. Uh, so thank you to the fire department, I don't know if Rob's still here, but thank you for all you do. Um, my next city council office hours are a week from today at Wally's. Uh, Chief Frank's gonna try to be there with me, uh, so if anyone wants to talk to Chief Frank or talk to me, uh, you can come out to Wally's from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty. Um, obviously, Mona is this Saturday, and now that Wally's, Wally Fest is official, you can come and celebrate the win with me. Uh, at Wally Fest after the game. Uh, but if you don't have tickets to the game, it is sold out, but you can go and watch a Jumbotron in the parking lot this year, which is kind of cool. Um, so lots of opportunities to watch the game, uh, but yeah, let's go Tigers.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for October tenth, twenty twenty-four. Anybody, uh, wanna make a motion or?
I'm going to approve that. Minutes is submitted.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody have a say? Next item on the agenda is approval of clients, and Mark came in to defend us. But we have others who are going to give a, a change in the votes from the group.
All right, so we've got direct payables at six hundred fifty-five thousand two nineteen thirteen. Regular payables for two hundred thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-three cents. Pension for eighteen seven eighty-three seventy-two. And payroll for five hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight oh five sixteen for a grand total per month of one million four hundred and twelve thousand two hundred dollars and sixty-four cents. Um, as part of the direct payables. Uh, see, we've got, um, a line, there's four different claims there for a line. We've got, uh, September Engineering. September, Rowan Park, uh, two, inspection, um, it's a minor one there, but that was, uh, in there in August and September for campus. Uh, Link Trail for sixty-five fifty-two fifty, and then twenty-one thousand fifteen dollars, uh, for Washington Street Reconstruction in November, September. Uh, we had twenty thousand two seventy-two seventy to BB Commercial Leasing, removal of pool filter system. And then we've got several credit cards, I don't know if it's all credit cards or anything out of the ordinary, and there's a lot of supplies and normal expenditures. Uh, between all the different departments, a bunch of utility bills for Center Point, and a whole lot of Duke. Um, and, uh, see, we've got twenty-eight thousand eight ten sixty-four to the hell of it, hell of it.
On my list.
Thank you. You never can get that, uh, for September, for the, September twenty-fourth, for the community center. Uh, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, so over half that total, well, over half, two, two-thirds total, is Detroit's construction for Rowan Park. Uh, Phase Two through August nineteenth and twenty-four. This is claim number three of, of the, of partial. Four hundred and sixty-two thousand seven ten eighty-seven. Um, and we've got Republic and a bunch of other, um, other ordinary buildings and everything else, so. Um, I think maybe know the Washington River in, in, twenty-five, two fifty-seven, sixty-four.
We will be getting a new roof.
Oh, that's for.
City Hall.
City Hall, okay.
Um, here, the first week of, um, December or the second week. So maybe the road will be open and then everybody will see what's going on in City Hall.
And then on the regular payables. Um, those are the, uh, just the ones that are slightly over two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we've got, um, fourteen thousand eight ninety-seven fifty-nine to a line for October Engineering Services. Um. Compensated plan update to AM Structure Point for September for thirty-five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um. Sixty-nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for dead shrimp trailers for two thousand twenty-four, seven by twenty trailer for the street department. Eighteen thousand eight thirty-three twenty-two Dean, Dean, Dean's, or Dean's Fire for, uh, forty-six sections of one and three-quarter inch fire hose. Seventy-seven, seventy-two thousand five ninety-five to Edward's for a skid loader. I'm sure that's what we're gonna talk about a little bit more. And, um, let's see, what else we got here? We've got, uh, JES and Sons, we had, uh, the street and fire, uh, departments, we had about thirty-seven hundred, thirty-eight hundred dollars for two-way radios. And twenty-one tire on repair. Anything else? Fourteen sixteen thousand two hundred twenty-one forty to Nelson and Company for seventeen ballistic helmets. Almost a thousand dollars a piece. Uh, Partners Market, uh, Portlet, six hundred forty-one dollars. Uh, so those are the, those are the major, sorry. Fifty-nine hundred and forty-two dollars for ten sets of twelve-inch stopsticks, at least two margins. Heavy trash data West Central Solid Waste District for two hundred and seventy-eight bucks. We talked about that briefly over here. And Marcy Street Service for four dead ash trees on all, on roof for thirty-eight hundred dollars, so. Uh, I would move for adoption of the claims as presented.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
We got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody?
Hope so.
Okay. We have no old business, so we're gonna go to new business. The first item on the agenda is an ordinance of midday. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Green Castle, Indiana. Estabilizing wage salaries and benefits for twenty twenty-five. Being obtained by the Common Council of the City of Green Castle that hereby amends the ordinance twenty twenty-four national eleven, exhibit A as follows. Um, so I will, I will tell you that, and it was kind of probably my fault, cause I, uh, kind of helped Michaela with the ordinance. We left out down the wastewater section, all of the rates for the folks that work at the wastewater department. So, uh, we thought, I'm, I'm so glad I was, I was working on the wastewater budget, and all of a sudden I go to the salary room and I'm like, oops. So I thought I caught that, cause that would've cost us a little bit of problems. So anyways, uh, those are all what the new rates will be. And then, um, with that, um, we, um, would like to, um. And, and we're gonna start off with, I will be, uh, totally upfront, we're gonna start off hiring one heavy equipment operator. And one, um, utility repair labor, because our folks at the street department cannot work. We've had a lot of water leaks, sometimes we have them in the middle of the night. Um, our street department superintendent cannot work all day and all night, so. But we've been just kind of seeing how this all works and kind of working the bugs out, um, and it works really well. So we're gonna be hiring a heavy equipment operator and probably another person to, uh, work with that, and then one of our utility guys. Uh, will also be working on that team. So we're gonna have a three-team, three-person team to start on, um, doing repairs. Um, I will tell you that our current, we have spent just under a quarter of a million dollars on, this is not. Parks, this is just paying contractors on utilities already here today, just under that. Um, if that is not making any improvements, that's just fixing repairs. Fixing what? Brakes and leaks. We really can't continue that. We've got to get in there, we've gotta make, we, we have hydrants that need to be replaced. We have valves that need to be replaced. We have all these, and we just, we're just gonna have to start. Doing some of this ourselves to be able to get it done. Uh, so we're gonna, um, see how this goes. We have plenty of work. We have sixty hydrants that need to be installed. We have, um, and then another bunch in the city. Uh, we might find, so I've been into that if we have the right applicants and, and I know for several years to come, we can provide enough labor for these guys. To work full-time every single day, um, getting things done.
You say sixteen hydrants or sixty?
Sixty.
Six zero.
We have six zero, plus probably another twenty and thirty existing ones. The good news is, is we have them all setting out at the water plant, so they're ready to be installed. We just gotta get them installed. Um, so, um, I'm asking that you will approve, um, the heavy equipment operator wage and a utility labor. For each one of these departments. Like I said, we're gonna start off with one, and we're gonna go from there. Um, but the, the current staff has been, like I said, we've had nine. They've been up at midnight working and they've been working during the day. We've also have done, a couple of those were some problems that we knew were leaking, that we just one day went out and fixed. Had it been leaking for over a year, so.
That's all moved.
And so we wonder why we have so much water loss back here, anyways. So we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So we'll bring this back next month, um, because we won't, what we plan on probably hiring, you know, until the end of the year, so.
Look, the hybrid will work till next year sometime.
Now, yeah, they'll go in next year or if, if they may get out dry water, so.
Yeah, this fall.
Yeah, maybe this fall if we don't have some of these leaks, but. Yeah, so it's something we're really trying to move forward to is trying to improve our infrastructure as much as possible. Okay, ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirteen and ordinance authorizing purchasing agents of the City of Greencastle to make advanced payments on contracts for public works projects and give them services. So I will let Michaela go through. To explain the reason for this. And if we feel comfortable, I may not have to read through it, but she could probably explain it to us all.
So state legislature changed June, March, three months ago.
July one.
July one.
See, that is how quick time flies. So July one, allowing local governments to issue advanced payments on public works projects. Up to fifty percent. So that the contractor can purchase materials for the project and we have a pretty much not to exceed contract costs of two million dollars.
Two million dollars is what the state statute allows, but we have limited that. That's what the state statute says, but we've limited it to two hundred and fifty thousand because we didn't think we needed to spend two billion in advance. It became more of a problem and I think more prevalent, it's always been a problem and, and difficult when, when your contractors need to hot, to, to purchase equipment and they, or materials and they just have to hope they're going to get paid in the end. But it's become more prevalent in COVID too, when you had long lead times and people had to buy materials or else it wouldn't happen. So I think that's why the state, this, this probably happened with the state legislature. It gives us a lot more ability to, to, to work with our contractors. I also think when they get money upfront, they don't. Things overall are a little cheaper because they have to allot for that lifetime there too, so. Better cash flow for them, I think, since they have to do business with the city.
I don't have any problem with the concept, but I'm, I'm not, if, if all department heads are designated purchasing agents, I think that could put them in a difficult position from time to time.
Department heads still have to comply with the purchasing, the, the ordinance that we did a long time ago.
Two thousand and four.
Yeah, but it gave us twenty five thousand for most of us have only the ability to spend twenty five thousand or else asked to go to Board of Works. So this would have to be to go to Board of Works.
Yeah, I just see it as kind of another layer that may not necessarily be necessary. I don't know.
I think, I, I, I think it will benefit us greatly. We have requests all the time from contractors.
Well, I understand that. I, I fully understand that. It's not that, it's the, the idea that the department heads are empowered.
You think we'll get more bids because people, I don't know. I don't know.
I think.
Maybe, quite possibly.
Makes sense to me, yeah.
Possibly, yeah. But, but that, so the twenty five thousand doesn't change, that's all we're limited to. It has to go to you guys or the Board of Works or redevelopment or one of the boards that have higher thresholds to, to go above that amount.
This just gives us the option to do this, right? We're not required in the form?
So it says none should proceed to two twenty five thousand dollars, is what you're saying?
Twenty five thousand for, for the department heads, but for, for others, it's two hundred fifty thousand.
Right.
Right.
But so if the department, if the department head has a twenty five thousand dollar cap, they're going to have to go to Board of Works to get, to bump up to two to four million dollars.
I can tell you normally a department head is going to spend any money at all. They usually check in or they have, they've always checked in with the clerk treasurer, like. So, and that has not changed, so. And then we'll be implementing the new purchase order system here, so there may be another layer that, that Michaela will probably ask you guys to. You know, some of them will get ready to really get the purchase order system going.
And, and we did contracts which state specifically that, that we'll pay, you pay this amount upfront, but then so we'd still, they would still be obligated. They couldn't just, I mean, they, they're going to continue to do the job that I have a contract.
Yeah, we have to stay in the bid that we could be willing to pay fifty percent upfront. And then we have to do some additional tracking. On the purchase order. On the purchase order.
It's only for materials. It's not without prepaying for related asking for.
Correct. No. It's for, for good services, for good public works.
Normally they just ask for payment of materials.
Yeah, I mean, that's normally when we agree to, we would only agree to for those sorts of things.
And the department heads aren't authorizing any checks or anything, so they still have to come in and ask to come in with quarters of all this.
Yeah, so I, I just, I just ask to approve the city contractor.
I feel like it makes sense to give ourselves options, so I would, I would make the motion to approve the ordinance as written.
Do I have a motion? Do you want to make a second?
I'll second one.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed or wants to say?
That's first reading before.
That's first reading. It'll be back next month. If you have any question, additional questions or anything. Check in with Michaela or board. Okay, next item on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Greencastle, Hudson County, Indiana. Adopting a preliminary strategic economic development plan for Central Indiana Regional Development Authority pursuant to IC thirty six dash seven. That's seven. Kristen, do you want to come in and talk about this? I guess it was, gosh, quite a few months ago. It just seems like yesterday. We had passed an ordinance, a resolution. Is it the ordinance?
This is the resolution.
Oh, we passed the ordinance already. We passed the ordinance to become part of SURA.
This is, and this is the resolution adopting a plan.
Yes, adopting a plan.
So typically when we talk about regionalism, oftentimes we talk about our Terre Haute region. And with these ready opportunities provided by the state, we revamped a little bit and decided to go east because that's where the growth is. And so what we have found is that going east has been beneficial for us. We've got about three point five million in our first ready round. Now we're waiting for an announcement on that second ready round, but we expect it any day now. It's taken the I E D C a little bit of time to process some of those claims. But that being said, then in order to be more cohesive and ramp up our presence even more, we have decided that not only are we going to join them for asking for ready money, but we want to join them in them being the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority for other opportunities as well. So in order to join, they request that you be part of their MSA, their Metropolitan Systemicul Area, which we are. We're an outlier, but we still fall in that. And so they have staff. We don't have any membership fees. They're not requesting any, any funding from us. But they do have meetings once a month. The meeting was yesterday, so we missed it because we hadn't approved it yet. But we did pass the ordinance to join and now this is the resolution saying that within the plan that they have provided that we want to continue with their partnership, so. If you have any questions, that's fine. It's, it's not really, I mean, it's just, RDAs do have the ability to tax, but this RDA is not at this point talking about taxing. What they're doing is they're talking about any state funding that through grants, like the ready funds. And then they also have the opportunity then to go for federal E D A, Economic Development Administration grants as well, which are the big dollar grants. So that's why they're doing this formation. And then it's going to be Indianapolis, Marion County, and then the Donut Counties as well as Andersons County, which is Madison, and then Putnam County, which is Greencastle. So those are the two that are quite adjacent to Marion, so. It's an eleven county region and so far we've found benefit from that and we want to continue on with that relationship.
So we'll be all of the counties, the greater.
Well, it's just, it's the Green Castle municipality, so they join as municipalities, so yes, that's why you're the governing authority for the municipality to join.
So it's just us and not the county council?
But if there's other opportunities, that's where we have those conversations if we want to go further. But like with ready, we didn't even have to be a member in order to get the funding and so, yeah, that would be the thing. As Greencastle, the mayor has felt like this is a probably really good option for us to, to not learn what's going on within that greater region and other funding opportunities. And we know that our commuting patterns go that way. We know that, you know, we know that a lot of people that live here go there, but we also pull some from there, so yeah.
So if we can do any benefit, will it just be to the city? Is there something that's outside the city?
Well.
Already grants?
At this point, probably. Well. They don't always require membership in order to get that done. So like with the ready, there was, there was no, you did not have to be a member of SURA in order to get ready funding. So it's grant by grant and opportunity by opportunity, and that's why we're sticking. But if they're like, oh, well, we have small town grants, then maybe we will go visit a Bay Bridge or go visit a Cooperdale and say, hey, guys, we have this opportunity. And then they can make those decisions at that time. But right now, with the ready two rounds, we focused strictly on Greencastle and we submitted for two million. It was revised out to two million dollars for the green and gold grant. So, and so we very specifically went for Greencastle.
That's correct.
Yes.
If they decide to tax in the future, what does that look like? How does that work?
Um, I think it's a vote by membership first in order to even move forward with that option.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve. I'll second. So we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
Kristen?
We will be attending those at least, they'll get to know that, that we exist over here at Greencastle. The next item on the agenda is contract for professional services with Greencastle Hudson County Development Center. I think the contract was in your packet and I think it's probably, I don't think anything's changed from the prior year contract.
The only thing that has changed is we asked for a funding increase from fifty five thousand to sixty thousand. So we do that about every three years. We come before you. We don't want to do it every year with inflation and everything. We just kind of wait and I'm moving along some about every three years. So we have requested a move from fifteen five thousand to sixty thousand. We'll be requesting that from, from the city. This, this contract is for economic development activity and it is paid from the economic development income tax dollars. So the state legislature allowed for those income tax dollars to be put into play about twelve years ago. And so that's where our funding source comes from. I also emailed you out a list of some of our highlights for the year. I apologize if you didn't get them. I just updated it yesterday and sent it up to you guys, but if somebody wants a copy, I'd be happy to share it. So that's just some of our highlights and you'll see that it's both city and county activity because we do have contracts with both of you. And so, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I, I don't have a question, but I do have a concern.
Okay.
In the attachment A, as I'm reading through kind of the obligations, I feel like they're pretty broad.
Okay.
And I know in, in years past, I've heard Counselor Thomas ask for economic development to come in and talk about what you're doing, things like that. I, I'm not making this motion right now, but I, I would like to suggest maybe we motion to table and ask your board to come back with a little more concrete and measurable goals. In my business, I wouldn't sign a contract that was this broad to maintain a staffed organization. What does that mean? Does that mean maintain an office? Does that mean maintain a number of staff? So I struggle with, with really most of these, they're just not very measurable. So that'd be my only comment. I'm not making that motion yet. I want other people to have a, a chance to talk, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't sign an agreement like this in my business, so I, I feel like we need to hold that standard.
I think all the benefits that we have from them over the years are very measurable. What jumps into my head is the downtown lighting. How much was contributed to the downtown lighting?
So we got a Duke grant for ten, ten thousand and then city matched with some of that, so.
Two hundred.
Oh, no, ready, ready, four hundred thousand. Yeah, and without our office, that's the conduit that they use in order to fund those kinds of projects. So that's correct, four hundred thousand and then an additional stipend of about sixty thousand that we're working through, so.
I'm not arguing that we don't see benefit, but you can't measure future goals off past results. So do we expect them this year to obtain another twenty thousand? What are our expectations? And right now we just don't have them.
I sat on the board for three years. It's a group of superstars. I mean, I feel very, very fortunate that we have Kristen and her team going to bat for us, so. I have no problems with the, the general comments as far as what their goals are going forward because I know that, that they follow through in the benefits. I just feel more than fortunate about them.
I also sat on that board and I, I had the same concerns that I have now. It's great. I'm not denying they have and has success in the past, but we can't just say, here's sixty thousand dollars, do something nice. What, what are we hoping? What are we expecting? We need to have something measurable. What is the economic growth? What is our goals? I don't think it's unreasonable to, to have something that's measurable in an agreement.
I think with projects changing and everything, we thought it was going to be. This project, we're going to get two hundred thousand dollars, could be less, could be more valuable with the different projects are. So it makes it kind of harder to say what we're going to measure. It's expected to grow, whether it might not grow. Because, you know, when the grants aren't there, the project.
For instance, this next year focus is going to be, I, I would assume a great deal on downtown. And economic development there instead of out in the, that's what traditionally we've done in the industrial area. But so that is different and it does change and I, yeah, I could see we could maybe change some and put some more specifics in. But I don't know about measurable if, if we don't, if we don't know exactly what.
Well, just because we set a goal doesn't mean, you know, they come back next year and we say, well, you didn't, you didn't raise a hundred thousand dollars downtown, but you raised it to the east of town, so we're not going to give you your money back. I think we can be reasonable, but we still have to set some kind of expectations.
So what exactly are you asking for? Did you want to meet with the board? Is that what you said?
Well, I, I don't know if we have to meet with the board, if the board can come back with something more measurable. Like what are, what are your board's goals? What are, how many loans do you want to give out this year? I mean, there's just.
And in large part, part of, part of our entire office's structure is we are a responsive agency. And so we can only respond to RFIs when they come in and they fit, they fit anything that we have. So I, it's, it's hard to be measurable other than to say, yeah, I mean, we've got the loan program, but if nobody applies for a loan, then how are we going to loan out money? Those are the types of things. So this is kind of what we provide and this is how we respond. But Catherine, I can't say, okay, mayor, this is what we're doing with your Catherine money. We are a partner, a partnering agency, but we are not a, we, I mean, we're a responsive agency, I guess is the way to say that.
So I know they're going to pay. I, I'm, I'm not able to get in much detail, but I know some things that are happening through the green and gold. Kristen will play a, a role in that because she has a, a skill, skill set that the rest of us don't have, okay, that, that the way she does, you know, they, they send information out to businesses and things like that. So I, I know she's going to be taking some of the role in that. Then there's just a lot of administrative roles that she does with the clerk treasurer. If not, if, if she didn't exist, Michaela would be responsible for her or I would have been responsible for her. So there's a lot of administrative things that, that, that she handles. And I will also tell you right now with everything that we have going on, she's taken up. Is helping do a lot of administrative things with Lori and I on the housing.
That's a great, the ready.
The variety grant, so.
Do you want all those things in there?
I think that, yeah, that'd be great. I mean, maybe I'll suggest, since I, I kind of see the writing on the wall, this is going to pass regardless. Well, no, 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 I, I, I think maybe I can suggest if we do make a motion to, to, to vote in favor of this. Would a monthly report on activity be unreasonable?
A lot of times that's difficult only because a lot of what we do is confidential. A lot of times that's difficult only because a lot of what we do is confidential, that's kind of where it exists, so I can maybe give a more.
Redacted report? Speaking to three somethings about something?
That's why we do year end reports, because we're talking about exactly what's happened and what's going to improve, but I can I can come in and promise maybe a quarterly report, maybe not monthly, but quarterly report and then maybe.
Daryl's asked for it for a while, that's and that's why I'm kind of causing a fuss. I've heard it I've heard it been asked for.
Yeah.
So maybe if we include that in the motion, so it's it's binding in some capacity.
Oh, a regular quarterly report, I know that I'll come in person and and, but yeah, we can do that.
I mean, you can handle it.
Because we can bring it back next month.
Yeah, I think you should be comfortable with this.
Yeah, we'll we'll put more detail in, for sure.
I've got no real issue with with the contract, I mean, the the concept of the contract, but it's it's important enough, but.
I mean, it doesn't have to be, but it's per time, we just bring it back next month, so. I still would like to leave in some of the broader language, but we can also add some more specific ones too, because we do want to have, we'll talk about it later.
Sure.
Sometimes words are good.
I think it's important.
I mean, this doesn't necessarily have to be Green Castle. I mean, I think this is this is a picture of our growth and development of our county, which Green Castle is a part of. Well, they can't. I don't know all that's going on in in the county, and I enjoy listening to what she presents to us, because that's that's in our best interest to know, you know, I.
And this three plus pages, you know, there's something about those are the industries, Lone Star, Cold Spring, and stuff out of the city.
Yes, in that case, I'd like to make the motion to table this for next month.
So we have a motion, a second on the table here, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So we have you back next month, or we'll have it back on the agenda, and anybody that wants to discuss that with Lori? Yep. Any any comments, any suggestions, send them to me. I've already got some ideas of how we can be more specific. The next item on the agenda is ordinance 2024-14, an ordinance establishing stormwater user rates and charges for the city of Green Castle. So this is first reading. I don't know that I'm going to read the whole thing. I will I will just tell you, it is here at City Hall.
Is it on the website?
I can get it on the website. It's a lot, but basically, the gist of it is, so we have already passed a ordinance that kind of states how stormwater is supposed to to be used and everything. Now, we we need a way to pay for stormwater, and so we have met, we've had some specials, yeah, special work sessions on this, and we have basically come up with, I may have to read this section. Basically, residents will pay $6 a month each month for the stormwater utility, okay, and that's our our homeowners, okay? It will be on their utility bill, and it it basically is $72 a year that will go towards the stormwater utility. It will be just like, you know, we'll have a water, we have our water utility, we have our wastewater utility, we will now have a stormwater utility. About every community around us has a stormwater utility rate, and so we're kind of one of the last. We have areas of the community that have issues, but we do not have a way to fund them, to pay for them, to fix them. If we have good stormwater and we can start upgrading our stormwater as we put in new roads and and that type of thing, then our roads are going to last longer, we're going to get the water off the roads. And then we also have to make sure that we are putting clean water into back into our, clean water back into the sources, streams and and those areas. So basically, it's it's $72 a year for our citizens. Now, churches and businesses and industry, they are going to pay at a different rate than the university. Those are our main non-residential folks will pay based on the previous payment. Impervious. Impervious payment, so that's like the roofs, the parking lots, those areas. It has all been, we had a consultant that had gone out and measured all these, so there's a rate for that, it's $6. Is there a section, Lori, that I can just unimprove real estate? Unimproved real estate is $2. Yeah, so moving to that. The non-residential real estate. I'll go ahead and break that section. Each tax parcel of non-residential real estate shall be assigned an ERU based upon the parcel individually measured impervious area in square feet divided by 3,000 square feet. This division will be calculated and rounded to one decimal place. However, the assessment for any non-residential tax parcel will be calculated monthly, stormwater user fee equal to or less than $6 shall be set at $6, okay? So basically, we're going to take your total major impervious area in square feet divided by 3,000 square feet times $6, okay?
ERU stands for equivalent residential.
Yes, equivalent, but.
So if somebody has 10,000 square feet, they're going to pay $4, they're going to pay $1,400.
But that is not people that are homeowners, this is non-residential.
It's made for commercial or investor or.
Churches, schools.
City of Green Castle.
Non-residential, non-residential part. Now, the next one is unimproved real estate, which is probably just like an empty. Vacant lot. Vacant, or have a lot or a lot, yeah.
I got one.
You got one? So unimproved real estate, each tax parcel of unimproved real estate shall pay one third of the cost of one ERU, which at the time of this ordinance is $2 per month. If the stormwater user of $6 per ERU per month is amended at a later date, the fee for unimproved real estate will be adjusted accordingly. So it's $2 per month on that.
So does that be added, like mine, my lot behind my house, will it be added by the telephone or the month?
We're going to have to have a discussion whether we're going to send that out once a year or. I added a section to this from what we talked about originally to include that we could, that Michaela or the clerk treasurer could bill yearly annually, because some people with vacant lots don't get utility bills at all. And so it would be, rather than send out a $2 bill each month, it would be just for the year and and.
Yeah, it'd be nice if you could just bill them annually.
That's what that's what I wrote. I wrote.
I mean, they are automatically billed annually, or they have the option to be billed annually?
It's up to the, the city has the option, is how I wrote it.
I think they should be going that way.
But but if you're already getting a bill and it's the one next door, so, yeah.
Yeah, but then that takes a lot of extra work to say, oh, we can add that to that utility bill for somebody who lives a mile away.
So anyway, we gave the clerk treasurer's office the option.
Okay, good.
And make sure how it all comes through the. So that's that's the fee. Does anybody have any, I'm sure most of the council here, we've all talked about a lot, I did, we did send out notification to the 10 top non-residential customers and really, you know, I only heard back from one, but wanted to come in, once they heard what they were doing, they were okay with it. They understood the process, so. It's just another way to to work on some of these issues that we have in the community.
Well, it's kind of a twofold thing. One, it's, to me, it's going back to the good stewards of the land, because, you know, what is running off ends up in the creek. Ends up in the creek, ends up in somebody's drinking water at some point, or it's Brazil or Brazil. So I think it's important in that in that respect, the second prong of that is, is that dealing with the stormwater is a requirement that's coming from on high. And you can you can blame I D M or you can have, it's actually coming from Washington, from E P A. And then it goes to the states and then it goes to the localities, so it's something that we, you know, we don't have to have a utility, but we have to deal with contaminants and everything else that that we could, that are running off, so. As much as you hate it, it's a very responsible thing to do for the community, for the well-being of the community.
And there are even more requirements since we're an MS four community.
So.
And we do have a failing.
What, 20 years, 30?
And we do have a failing stormwater infrastructure right now. Just when they were doing the sanitary work up here on Shaw, or yeah, Shawon, around the water port, when they got in there, the reason the road got tore up so much was because they had to retake, replace the stormwater.
And that's always been a problem down there anyhow, when Ellis was there, you know, he was like Ellis behind his house. So, you know, he used to, oh, he.
Well, the example with Davidson, I mean, he outruns off, sometimes runs off in pools and, you know, it takes forever for that water to get, you know, to be here tomorrow.
It's a it's a very responsible approach to to dealing with, really needs to be dealt with.
And in the the rate that we developed is, you know, it's pretty much 100% going to stormwater.
And that's about half of what we projected when we first started.
When we first started, we were closer to the $11, $12 rate, so.
We did get the rate down, so. Trying to be as responsible as we can.
So you just need a motion?
I just need a motion and a second.
I would make the motion to accept ordinance 2024-14.
I'll second.
A motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
20 years.
You got it, amen.
I've sat through a lot. We're going to get work done on it.
So when, assuming this passes next month, it'll start January, February bills?
Yes, it will start in February, whatever. Okay, the most, I don't know, ordinance 2024-15, an ordinance adopting and establishing designated outdoor refreshment areas in the city of Green Castle, Indiana. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Vince. He has worked on this for several months now. With Kathy.
With Kathy.
With Kathy. So you guys can tag team here, Kathy, and I think you had some other folks helping you out.
Yeah.
And then I know Lori just worked on it with these songs, so I'll let you, Vince, go ahead.
Sure, absolutely.
Talk about, kind of hit the hot points and we'll go from there.
Yeah, so we started talking about this a few months back. We formed a committee that ended up being local business owners, restaurateurs, and community members, myself and and Councilor Asbell. So what a designated outdoor refreshment area would allow us to do under state statute is create up to seven, but we're proposing one, Dora district in town right now. What a Dora district is, is allows us to create a process, I meant to bring one tonight, that would allow restaurants to distribute to-go containers for alcoholic beverages during the designated times and and days of the Dora district. They can walk around the district with those drinks during the designated times and shop at any participating restaurant or business that allows Dora participants to come into their shop. So everyone in this district can opt in or opt out and can change how they opt in and opt out as well. Right now, we we brought a draft ordinance to the the committee that met and decided, based off really the business owner input, to propose an initial hours of operation of Thursday through Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. throughout the entire year. So what this allows for is special events on Fridays and the weekends, think First Fridays with a little a little easier administrative setup. Think brunches where you can encourage people to go out to a restaurant, have brunch, then walk around and shop at boutiques during these times and these dates. By state statute, we could do every day, all day, if we wanted to, we chose to reel it in to Thursday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. based specifically off restaurant input. In the packet, there is a map of the districts. We we designated it by zones just to make it easier to describe in legal terms, which is a difficult task, and I have to think.
It was difficult.
I really have to thank the Chamber and Lost Hollow took a a strong leading role in doing a lot of this heavy lifting, along with with Lori, Councilor Asbell. So you can see the zones that are there, it would allow someone to go to any of our downtown restaurants. Currently, we have applications submitted from Lost Hollow, Almost Home, Moore's, The Elks were also eligible, Tap House Bridges, Lost Hollow, and LeWisk. We're also in talks with Don Julio, Taco Wapo, Marvin's, and Putnam Inn. I think that includes everyone. Oh, The Duck has an application in as well, I don't think I said The Duck.
Miguel Turner's in today.
Oh, Miguel Turner's in, great, great, so Don Julio is in as well. So outside of the the obvious economic benefit of encouraging people to shop at our downtown stores, it also makes events like First Friday a lot easier from an administrative standpoint. Right now, every vendor has to apply through EXICE to have a designated area of the square, and it's their area, they, no one can technically take drinks between those areas. This would allow a lot of that paperwork to be gone for our restaurants, they can just give their Dora cups, people can walk around the Dora district with no additional paperwork. Outside vendors can come in for special events and apply for temporary Dora permits, and we will be working with, I don't know if we have it already, but the Catholic Church will be submitting a waiver, per state statute, since they are in the district, they do have to agree to it, and told they're excited to to support that, and will hopefully take advantage of it for some of their events. So in the packet, you'll see some drafts that were done by Madison Hannah at the Chamber for what the the logos on the cups could look like, as well as what some of the stickers would look like that businesses can put on their door to indicate if beverages are allowed, if they're not allowed, or if beverages are sold there. Another good thing to know is, per state statute and per ordinance, you can only leave a restaurant with two Dora drinks at a time, so you don't have to worry about someone buying 15 drinks, walking around, passing them up. I'm happy to answer any other questions. I think I've given you all the knowledge I have, so any other questions might have to go to Lori, but I will do my best.
I don't really have any question. I've told you, and I think I showed you signage or something, Vine City. It's a very, very contiguous narrow area in that community. It's downtown, isn't it, like, you know, it's a small community, it's downtown, it's about the same size as our, and they're always having something, literally. My only real problem with this is that it's sprawled significantly from when we first started talking about it. And while I I don't like to preclude anybody in something that goes, I think the idea that you're walking up and down Jackson Street is is really not a good look, and I think it need, I think it needs to be narrowed to the downtown, I mean, I really do. Now, if you want to include Vine Street and down down to to The Duck, I get that, because really, what's in between downtown and Duck, you know, most of ours, I guess. So that that's not an issue, but it's it's just grum, kind of metastasized this district has, and particularly to the north, I I really don't like it. And that's enough to leave home.
Nothing about the vendor for Friday, you just have to move downtown.
Yeah, this so this would open it up to more days of the week.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, and and hopefully drive some economic development up to that area. I think, you know, if a boutique was open next to. Think, uh, you know, if a boutique was open next to Putnam Inn, then, you know, like, some businesses have to leave for that to happen, but it would allow that growth. As of right now, Putnam Inn has not submitted an application, but I will admit, it's been really hard for me to get in touch with them. Um, so if they, if they don't submit one before second reading, I, I, I mean, I think, I would make sense if they don't want to be in, then we shouldn't include them, but I, I did want to, and we talked about in the committee, making sure that any downtown business could participate, and.
We have a next for the one.
Yeah, uh, and I think it also gives us an opportunity in the future to look at ways to make that more connected, right? Um, how do we make the sidewalks better, how do we make it more walkable, uh, that'll only benefit the entire downtown, but I definitely, I see your point, and, and.
And, and that was something that we actually talked about in the meeting too, is that, that area down Jackson Street, we should be sure that it's safe.
Yeah, we're talking at least three blocks between.
What does this concept? Nope, I started out with the wrong word. How does this concept create something that I can do now, more than what I can do now?
Yeah, so, so it creates more opportunity, so, uh, you're finishing dinner at, uh, The Whisk, or let's say Almost Home, you're finishing dinner at Almost Home, uh, maybe you're, the person you're at dinner with is taking their time eating their dessert, you can grab your beer, walk next door, and go shopping while you wait. It sounds small, uh, but it makes a huge economic impact, and I, it, we do have a letter from the Chamber, uh, talking about some, some of the benefits other cities have already seen. This is a relatively new, uh, opportunity in the state, uh, but, but communities are seeing the benefit, and it becomes a destination. Um, we'd be the, I don't think any of our surrounding communities are doing this yet, um, so it drives people in. Um, I, I went to Noblesville for their launch of their Dora, uh, it was on a First Friday, and their First Fridays are way different than ours, they don't shut down the street. Um, but you know, about thirty percent of the people, not everyone, but about thirty percent were walking around with their drinks, going store to store, um, where they otherwise might have been just sitting at the bar, not shopping.
I have a, I have a hard time thinking that having a beer in my hand would encourage me to go shop.
There's a lot of research to prove that wrong. Think about any fundraiser you've ever been, you've ever been to, they give you a couple of drinks and they ask you for money.
I just have a hard time with that concept, that if I need to shop, I'll go to that, I'll go to that store.
So here's, here's another.
I don't need a beer in my hand to do that.
Here's another potential situation, um, the boutiques could organize and partner with a local restaurant to do a Saturday morning brunch and boutique crawl.
That does happen.
Um, so it does happen, and it's happened in town before, there's been mimoses, but that, they would have to do a lot of paperwork in the past to do that. So now you could go to brunch at Restaurant A, and as soon as you're done with your food, take your drink and go shopping.
It'd be a great way for our businesses to partner up, I think, too.
Yeah, and, and I've talked to a few businesses, uh, I know Burge Boots and The Whisk were exploring some ideas, uh, just in the name one, I'm sure there'd be more opportunities with Tap House and Brits. I think maybe, I forgot, all of the Tap House, um, Bridges Group is all on board as well. Um, really, it's everyone but Don Julio at this point, I think, and, and Putnam Inn, who haven't submitted their application.
Didn't you say Don Julio did?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Taco, Taco Wapo, we, we offered Taco Wapo, they have not submitted one yet, sorry.
Well, it's kind of been their interest, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, you, you don't have to register by sort of time for that year, I mean, they can join.
Yeah, they can join, yeah.
Somebody said if they haven't done it by, next time we pass this over, you know, by next month, but they can apply in April.
Yeah.
You know, say, well, it's springtime now, it's, let's, let's.
And we did make the ordinance flexible, um, I think we designated, the mayor can accept applications, if I remember correctly, so.
Is there any fee? I did not see it.
There is a fifty-dollar fee we put in.
Okay, we're looking for that.
Yeah, the businesses would supply their own, uh, well, we would, we would design the cups, but the businesses would have to purchase their own cups. Um, so we made the fee pretty small, but still enough to have some buy-in and hopefully make up for some of the paperwork we have to do here at City Hall.
I'm not really on board with this, I don't like the message it sends, I don't like the optics. The thought that our businesses will thrive and attract more visitors and enhance community experience because they can come down and, and drink in our downtown area. I just, it's not my vision for Greencastle, and I'm probably in the minority, but it's just not what I want to promote for our downtown family area.
And shop and have a beer.
I mean, if you're envisioning winos laying in the gutter.
No, I just hate the thought of people coming downtown because they really can drink and walk around with a drink in my hand, and what does that say about our community and our, you know?
So to, to that point, um, there's currently nothing on our city code against doing that already. So this is actually making downtown drinking more restrictive. Um, I could go sit in front of Moore's and have a beer right now, uh, once this passes, I cannot go sit in front of Moore's and have a beer unless it's in a Dora cup. So it, it's a more restrictive, um, in, in many ways, more restrictive policy.
Oh, if, if you can do that right now, why don't people?
I don't think most people know, but now the banner's probably gonna write about it, so, now we need to pass this, and probably need to update city code after this.
Yeah, we, we do restrict in vehicles, we have an open.
Oh, yes, we say that, that's one thing I don't want somebody to take a Dora cup and then get in their vehicle.
But no.
Walk, walk around for five or ten minutes, then go get their.
I saw that once.
Well, yeah, they can finish it, throw it in the trash can, then drive home.
And obviously, uh, the, the state laws still apply regarding public intoxication.
Yeah.
Many, many years ago, sitting at my desk on the first floor of the courthouse, when the Double D was right across the street. I saw this young man come right out and get in my car.
So you should lock it. My mom wouldn't let us walk along the north side of the square.
No.
Town Tavern and the Double D, and, and so.
That was the bad side of the square.
You know, it was a good thing of being rid of those.
I, I will say, while, while we definitely need to work through any details anyone's not comfortable with, the business owners really want this overwhelmingly.
I think so too, and like, I think it's a great way to partner up with the business owners and community.
And if, if, for any reason we implement this and we aren't happy with it, we can adjust it, we can change it, we can cancel it in the future.
And businesses don't have to participate.
Yeah.
Like local businesses, they, we, you talked about putting signage, um, in the windows, if it's a Dora building, then, then they can bring their alcoholic beverage in. But businesses don't have to participate at all.
And I did see it in the work, if you opt out, you don't have to put a sign, which I think is, which I think is correct.
Yeah. Yeah, we wanted to make it really flexible for those who wanted to participate and those who didn't, although I honestly, I haven't spoken to a single business who isn't interested in it so far, and I've, I believe I've spoken to every business downtown.
Well, he, okay, so Pershings Family Dentistry's in a one Dora?
Retail businesses.
Okay.
Sorry.
I was gonna say, I need to be some, I, I'm pretty sure that, you know, retired my partner that bought me out, probably not in one of the county halls for drinking it.
You're right.
Right.
The retail businesses are all overwhelmingly in support.
It would make taxes maybe a little bit easier.
If my accountant was in the door, I'd be more likely to go to him.
You wire me.
Okay, does anybody else have any thing, are we ready to, somebody want to make a motion?
Can I make my own motion?
You can make your own motion.
I'd love to make a motion in support of the small businesses downtown who really need some help right now to prove the Dora is written.
Okay, I'll second it. I've got a motion and a second, so all in favor say aye.
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 Would you be a rock for, or, or a nix? Anybody, Nick?
Nick.
Okay, so we got, um, forty-two.
I'm, I'm for helping the small businesses, but I don't, I don't like the expansive nature of these zones.
Not that I'm anti-business, if that's what this is, I just, I'm kind of like.
I know.
A person, and I don't like the image.
Lot, lot of regulations and stuff, so, I could prob, I could probably be a little more supportive.
Two, two, um, four.
Who voted, who voted against it?
Yeah, vote for the.
I thought David did.
Dave, did you?
Yeah.
So three against it.
Is this Ben tonight, or?
No.
He is not here, he is not here, so we just have six tonight. Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're against it.
So it's four to two against.
Four to two against.
Oh.
Could be a great conversation, other places.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do that.
Will Sander say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.